Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman, and I want to welcome you to the November 10th, 2022 public hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. If you could check your phones and make sure they're on mute or off, I would appreciate that. We have our mayor, Phil Good, joining us at our meeting here. City staff members will introduce themselves when they come up to speak. Why don't we start off with introduction of Tom?
Well, good morning. My name's Tom Hutchison. Welcome.
Good morning. Ted Gamboji.
Good morning. Tom Riley.
It's Butch Tracy.
This is an open public hearing and is being taped recorded and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The number of commission members present is five. It will require a majority vote of those present to pass a motion. As some individuals may be attending this meeting remotely, all parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are required to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Members of the public, when called upon, are required to state their name and address for the record so we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date if necessary. Next item on the agenda is the review of the regular meeting minutes from October 27, 2022. Are there any corrections?
Yeah, Tom Hutchison. When I read it, I noticed, I think I noticed, that Susan Graham's comments were not completely captured.
That's been fixed.
It's been fixed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a motion concerning the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes?
The fixed minutes?
The repaired minutes, yes.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'd second it. Butch Tracy.
Tom Riley.
Thank you.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion?
Excuse me. My name is Violetta Ayalon. The gentleman said that there was a need for correction for the minutes, but we didn't hear what the correction that were fixed were. So you guys approving something without knowing the correction?
Yeah, he did state it. It was one sentence at the end where Commissioner Graham was speaking, and about half the sentence wasn't complete.
So what was that half of the sentence that needed completion?
I'll pull that up.
Thank you.
All right. I'll just read the full. Oh, you know what? I think you're talking about the Board of Adjustment minutes or the ABO.
In general.
Tom mentioned that Susan's.
Okay, so here's the sentence in full. Commissioner Graham expressed concern about being able to separate legal and financial issues from land use. She wants to protect the airport, but also to protect current landowners near the airport.
I will go back to our motion maker and second it. Would that be acceptable then?
Yes. I moved to the repaired minutes.
Okay.
I second it.
All right. Kaylee, will you go ahead and call the roll for the vote?
Let's see. Butch Tracy?
Approve.
Tom Riley?
Yes.
Tom Hutchison?
Yes.
Stan Galagaski? He's still not on, so we'll proceed. Ted Gamboji?
Approved.
Don Michaelman?
Approved.
Motion passes 5-0.
Next on the agenda is RVP 22-008, Revision of Platte for the Preserve at Prescott Phase V, Adding an Additional Seven Lots to the Overall Approved PAD Development. Property Owner: Westridge Preserve LLC. Applicant: Kelly Wise Engineering, Inc. Tammy.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Mayor of the Commission, Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner with the City of Prescott. So this subdivision was originally called the Downer Subdivision. Through the years, the developer purchased the subdivision, and he's been revising phases to reduce the impact to natural terrain, excavation work, and cost of lot preparation. This is a planned area development subdivision, so they're allowed to reduce the lot sizes and reduce the setbacks, and those are all noted on the plats. In 2011, there was a master plan that allowed for a maximum of 144 lots, and they also had the allowance to move the density between phases as they started replating it to be able to add lots to other phases or have an excessive amount of lots. Now we're on the last phase of the Downer, what was originally the Downer subdivision, and because of all the allocations and stuff, they are asking for an additional seven lots. Because of this, it is requiring a water service allocation because water service application because it's the increase in the demand that was originally approved. So that requires it to go through the water policy, and this is why you're seeing this application. Revisions of plats usually just go to city council. So per the water policy, if they have to go through the Water Issues Subcommittee, and they cannot be approved administratively for their water, then they have to come through a planning process. So this is a project in question. You have this in your packet. So this is the subdivision right here, and this additional pink area is actually the open space that was dedicated or given to the City of Prescott. So this is all open space, but this is the last phase of what was originally called the Downer subdivision. So when we pull it in, it pulls in our open space, too. So this is the area in question. We're replating this face here, which is left. Go ahead.
Tammy, in the earlier slide, you said the pink area is open space, but we're going to look at lots that are colored pink, right?
So yeah, right here, these are the lots in question. So this is right here is part of the open space, and these are the lots that are remainder that we're looking at today.
Tammy, in your discussion there, will you point out the seven lots? Because when you look at the information we have here, there are more than seven lots shown in these different pictures.
So there was the remainder that was left from the 144, and then when we look at the plat, and I'll bring it up in a second, that you'll see there's additional lots beyond the 144 in the numbers. And it's kind of tricky to look at because it has the old lot lines and the new lot lines. But these are lots right here, and so the imagery kind of shows. So these are the lots. You can kind of see it in the yellow. And so we're rearranging them to kind of meet these building pads that have been created. So they went in and created some of the building paths to kind of see what will work, and then amended the plat to work around those building envelopes or building pads. We've seen this throughout this whole subdivision. So usually they go just to go through a replat process, which is administrative, but because of the addition of the seven lots above the 144 for the master plan, it has to go through a revision of plat. Like I said, usually those just go to city council, but because of the water policy and the increase in demand, it has to go through the Water Issues Subcommittee, and so we have to go through, bring this application through the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Tammy, while we're on the topic of lots, could you go back to the original pink, no, forward one there? Now, on that, I count 13 lots. Is that correct?
So those are, that's the, right now, the leftover. These are the lot numbers for what is there now, which is the last of the Downer subdivision. So now we're going to replat this, and we're adding, these are all changing. The numbers have changed because of all the other phases beforehand. These all numbers have all changed throughout that plating. It's a confusing one. It has a lot of history.
So I just want to make, on this map, there are 13 lots, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Go on.
Okay. So as we're changing here, the lots are, lot numbers are changing, and they're adding seven additional lots because as they replatted it through phases four, it took in, added lots to some of those phases. Go ahead.
Now, here's my other question. On this map, I count nine. So the pink one had 13 lots, and this one is nine.
So through the replating of phases one through four, they took in, because they were able to move lot numbers, move lots around. So the master plan said you have an allowance, 144 lots total through all your phases, but you can change, as you're replating it, you can move lots and increase the density in those other phases. So what we have left is so many number of lots, and so to be able to accommodate the rest of the property, he needs seven more additional lots, and that's the reason why it's coming through this process.
We're going from 144 to 151.
Correct. Overall, through the whole plating process. Okay. I can't right now.
I know.
Okay. So this, went through all reviewing agencies. There were no issues or concerns. It meets all our criteria. Like I said, the reason this is before you today is with the water policy because they increased the demand analysis. That has to go through Water Issues Subcommittee. So I'm free to answer any questions, and the developers here could probably answer more questions than I can. There's a lot of history with this project, and like I said, through the plating phases of one through four, they were able to move numbers and move lot numbers around. So this is what's the remainder and plus seven additional lots. There's mud?
Okay. Questions for Tammy?
Okay.
Comment. I like, I like the way the lots have been rearranged. It makes logical sense, and all the building pads have been created. Makes good sense. I think it's, I think it's smart.
Other questions? Tammy, which order is it going? P and Z, Water Committee, or Water then P and Z?
So it goes to, the way the process, these go. So all these applications today is going through the same process. So we go to Planning and Zoning today for your recommendation, then they go to Water Issues Subcommittee, which is the first Tuesday of the month, then pending the recommendation from those, then it goes to the second council member, council meeting of the month together. So this and the water application go together to city council.
Okay.
So you're first.
You guys are first. We want to make sure it's a viable project before it moves forward, but we wouldn't bring you a project if it hasn't gone, been reviewed and is a viable project.
Okay. Any further questions for Tammy, staff? Would the applicant want to make any statements?
I could give you a little clarity if you'd mind.
Come up to the podium.
Hi, my name's Tom Devereaux, 5769 Columbine Road. Thank you for your service, and if you look above on this map, you'll see that the high-density area is confined to Phase Four, which is the one that's down below. And this whole thing was an amoeba, including the open space, which I purposely donated to the city to prove a point about open space because, but that's another subject for another Any rate, every time I did a phase, there has to be lots that are usable, and first phase, I lost six lots. Second phase, I lost, phase I lost seven or eight lots, and it just goes on and on. And so we created through here, through, through the process, we got approval to take that fourth phase and make an amoeba out of it and make smaller, a smaller product. We call it Walmart view, but not, my salespeople don't. And, and, and so, you know, it's confined down there, and when we got done, we made it all into lots. Anything that was left over, the open space was donated long ago, but it was an amoeba, and it was done properly through, through your legal department and mine. And anything that was left over would, you were, you had to take into the open space. Not that that bothers anyone, but I mean, so when we got up here to, Phase Five is actually a reduction of lots, Ted, just like you've noticed. I mean, yeah, there's, you know, we're turning 14 lots into actually 11. And so the stuff that you see along the back there that are big, big, big parcels that don't have any way to them, those in this plat, when this replat goes through, will be added to the open space that surrounds Walmart view. Anyway, I forgot I'm on TV. I think, actually, I was mistaken. It's Peak's view. But so, so in this phase, it's actually a reduction of lots. Back to another little history lesson, and we don't want to get water attorneys involved, but this, this actually, the 144 lots was granted and platted and recorded in 1988. And so there's a whole bunch of history between now and then. The owners have tried to gate the community, but we ended up building the access, the other access to forest trails and all that through this. That's why it could never be gated. Tom will remember that vividly because he was on council back when that was going on. But in 1988, when this was, when this was recorded and the water allocated to it for 144 lots, it was surface water. It wasn't anything to do with water mining or the, you know, any of the paper water that we deal with now. And so it had its own designation, and actually it's, it allowed you to go over by 10% as long as you didn't put in a golf course or a water park or a swimming, you know, a swimming center or something like that. So when we got done with Phase Four, and then we reduced Phase Five so that every lot had a building site on it, we were, we were seven lots over. And it's just been a long process to get to where I could be in front of you guys and show you what it is we're doing engineering-wise, because everybody's been so busy. I should have been in here a year ago, honestly. But now we're ready to go. The rules have changed. It's not administrative anymore, and, and so it's been the plan, it's been the plan for a long time. It's just now, now we have to have you guys just put input on it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you for the information on that.
So I want to say that Stan is on a Zoom we created.
Okay. Stan, did you have any questions?
I do not. Thanks.
Okay. Any members of the public would like to make a comment concerning this application? If not, is there a motion concerning the application?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of site plan RVP 22-88 Preserve at Prescott Phase V.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'd like to second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just want to make sure that he said 22-88. It's 008.
Oh, he did. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
It's clarification.
Okay. I will do the roll call now.
Okay.
Butch Tracy?
Approve.
Tom Riley?
Approve.
Stan Galagaski?
Approve.
Tom Hutchison?
Approve.
Ted Gamboji?
Approved.
Don Michaelman?
Approve.
The motion passes 6-0.
Okay. Next on the agenda is SIT E 22-012, Site Plan Review for VA Apartments on Approximately 1.69 Acres of the 91.56 Acre Complex. Zoning SPC, Specially Planned Community. Property Owner: U.S. Veterans Administration. Applicant is Stroll Architecture, Inc. Site APN 114-01-001L. Location 500 North State Route 89. Tammy?
Thank you, Chairman, members of commission. So, so the request before you is a site plan approval. There's nothing changing to the site. It's existing. The houses are existing. There are six houses that are part of the Veterans Administration property that are being converted. They were historically used as officers' quarters. So the current proposal is to convert the six single-family residences to 23 apartments. The proposed 23 apartment units is an increase in water demand for the property and required a new water service application. Multifamily projects per the water policy with more than eight dwelling units must be reviewed by the Water Issues Subcommittee. So this is the property location. Here's 89 here. This is out in the county. The rest of the VA property is in the county, and this one's within the city. Here's the imagery of the property, and we're looking at this area right here of the property. So it's these six houses here that we are looking at. There is parking along the roadway here that will remain, that will be adequate parking for the proposed six residences, I mean, the 23 apartments. So these are the six houses that are going to be converted into 23 apartments. We have the parking along here that is adequate for the proposed use. Site Plan Review requires us to look at the setback requirements, the building lot. They're existing. There's no changes to that. It does have internal circulation, which is adequate, and the fire department had no concerns with it remaining as it is. There's no landscaping required. This is residential, and it's very much buffered from the rest of the property or from any other property lines. Any changes to the outdoor lighting will be permitted and reviewed at time of permitting. They have adequate parking for the proposed use, and there's no issues with the road access. It's been there for a very long time, so, and there's no changes to that. So this is our recommendation to approve. This project also has HUD funding to help fund it. That's going through our CDBG program, so, and we've been working very closely with the VA to create additional housing on the property for veterans. So this is one of those, this is one of the phases that we're doing on the property. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm free to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions for Tammy?
Tammy, there, there's six officers' quarters in question here. How many are there out there at the facility?
Looks like there's eight additional ones down here to the south.
So 14 then?
That's what it looks like, yes.
The six are going to turn into 23 apartments. So that's roughly four per building?
About.
What does an apartment consist of?
A bedroom, a bathroom, a kitchen, and a living area.
Thank you.
Other questions for Tammy?
Tammy, I assume they have water already there?
Yes. So the, the current water and sewer connections are part of the overall veterans parcel, but because these are going to be separated kind of from the VA property, they have to put in a separate. But the reason why it's before you today is they're going from six dwelling, six residences to 23 apartments, so increase in water demand. So, and it has to go through Water Issues Subcommittee. So that's the reason why it's before you today.
Yeah, I was going to ask you what the rationale was. Thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Tom?
Tammy, Tom Riley, you said in the, in the background that you gave us that the, they'll be disconnecting from Fort Whipple's private water and sewer system, which they have, and will they be physically attaching to the city's water system? And why? Is the private water system inadequate?
And I'll defer to the architect to maybe answer that question.
No idea.
Little bit more idea.
Good morning, Planning Commission. My name is Doug Stroh. I live at 1937 Rocky Dells Drive. I think I can answer some of these questions for you. We'll go back to what Ted asked, and there are currently six houses that we're converting to 23 apartments. But as configured now, each house had seven or eight bedrooms, so I'm not really sure if we're going to be changing the total number of population for when it was used as, you know, housing for the officers. We are converting the six buildings into 23 individual apartments, and we're, we're doing that by taking a lot of these bedrooms and turning them into the kitchens and the, the living quarters and everything else. The vast majority of the apartments are one-bedroom and would be probably a single person. We don't really anticipate too many married folks in here. There are a few two-bedroom units that would be most likely just a couple veterans. These are all for lower-income type housing for veterans. So as far as the water use, I don't know that it's much different than it is now, but that's irrelevant. I mean, we have to go by the new rules, and so we're basing everything on the 23 units and the formulas to use for apartments. As far as parking goes, we now will meet the current parking requirements for apartments, you know, one unit per bedroom and guest parking. And the way we're accomplishing that, if you've been out there in the last few years, the fire department required them to kind of cable off a lot of that parking because these houses were not sprinkled. So now that we're going to sprinkle all of them, we can take those cables down and go back to the original parking. So we actually end up with 40, 46 total spaces, which is required with your parking ordinances. The reason that the, we are asking for a new water service is because the VA is giving a very long-term lease to U.S. Vets and the Gorman Corporation, which develops public housing. And so part of the agreement between the VA and U.S. Vets is they don't want anything to do with it, no responsibilities, totally disconnected from their system. That was part of the negotiations. I can see some logic there, but wasn't involved in those at all. So we're honoring that requirement, and we're going to be hooking up with a new fresh connection for both water and sewer, and so a new meter. So the bill will go to U.S. Vets instead of the, the VA. So we are not touching the exterior of the buildings. They've been kept in very good shape, and we're not adding any landscaping. All those big old elm trees are happy and don't require any, any additional water. We are very carefully addressing the interior changes, modifications. We are working with Chipo on that. Kat Moody is involved to a certain degree also. And all the interior remodeling we're doing, we're, we're keeping probably 80% of the interior walls. There's just so many rooms and stuff. It worked out that way. Some historical features that we're not going to touch. The window trim, the stairways are incredible. And we also have like four or five-foot-wide ornate pocket doors, and of course, we're not going to touch those either. And they have plaster walls, and so any new walls will be plaster also to match the existing. We don't want to run, take down a lot of walls or ceiling or anything, so we're going to use the cassette approach on the HVAC systems, where we'll just have the pipes. It'll come up to cassettes in each room, and we'll probably do a little soffit detail to run those pipes behind that. We're keeping all the fireplaces intact. They won't be used, but they have some pretty, pretty cool fireplaces. So we're very conscious of all of that history also. It's been a very interesting project. The, the top floor, the third floor, is actually an attic mostly on most of them. One was turned into a bunk area, and one was offices. So we're going to utilize some of that space, too, and they have the nice sloped ceilings and a lot of the, the unique old structures exposed, and it's back when two-by-twelves were two-by-twelves. So it's, it's a pretty fun project. Open any other questions that you might have?
Yeah. Tom Hutchison, Doug, just for clarification, who, who owns, who will own these apartments?
Well, the VA owns the buildings, and the long-term lease and all the lease improvements will be U.S. Vets will own them. And they have a waiting list, I think, I don't even want to quote that, but it's, it's more than what will take to fill this, and then in the future, you'll see us coming back. We're also proposing to build a new 100-unit apartment complex down by the, the old baseball field.
Number two, do you foresee this trend expanding to include some of the other?
I don't think so. You know, this process, gosh, it started like three or four years ago with the RFP, and then the lease negotiations and everything else. And then because of the fact that we're adding 100 more units, new, a new building down by the baseball field, you know, I certainly can't predict the future. And Carol from U.S. Vets unfortunately had a conference out of town, so she couldn't be here today to answer those kinds of questions, Tom. But I can't say that this will be the end of it or not.
Crystal ball isn't working today, huh?
That's, not for two weeks.
Thanks.
Another question. Butch Tracy. When were these constructed, these houses?
When were these constructed, these houses?
I knew you were going to ask me that, I forgot to refresh my memory, but it was over 100 years ago.
Really?
I think it was 1907.
Yeah.
Was it?
According to plaque out there.
We worked on some of those houses too, but yeah.
They're old.
I went to Sunday School in one of those houses.
My point.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
I didn't think they would add them.
Other questions?
Doug, I wanted to compliment you, you know, the few times that I've been out there, I've just been impressed with the architecture, so I'm glad to hear that the exterior stays the same.
I'd touch you, and I think on one of the houses, we're doing a little ramp up to those porches that are raised up, a little maybe six or eight-foot cast-in-place concrete ramp for the 188 unit that we have, but other than that, it's, my rules are you don't touch it, so.
Approximately, how big would an apartment be?
Oh, they vary, the one-bedroom average is, and there's 15 of those, 550 square feet for a one-bedroom, so they're efficient, and then the two-bedroom units are different sizes, because they kind of filled out remaining space in the buildings. We have eight of those, and they vary, there's some 800-square footers, 1,000-square footers, and then the big one is 1,350 square feet.
You have any idea what they would rent for?
No clue. That's a US Vets question too, and I'm sure that has a lot to do with how much the renovation cost will be, but they have a deal with the VA and HUD, and so.
Okay, thank you.
Above my pay grade.
Other questions? I have a couple. I find this proposal very interesting, being a veteran myself, I think it's something that is needed by the community, but I find the procedure interesting, the property is owned by the VA, they're going to continue ownership, it is on VA land, federal land, and is that in the city limits or outside the city limits?
This portion is within the city.
This part will be in the city?
Yes, that's why you're hearing it. So the other part out here is this is all in the county, which the 100 unit that he mentioned is going to be out in the county land, so you will not see that.
Okay, but I think it's a very needed project here too, so, thank you, sir. Any further comments? Stan, do you have any questions?
I don't, but I do, I also want to echo your comments, you know, for taking on this project for one, and staying with it all these years, you know, the historical value of these homes are, you know, allowing, I'm so glad that you're keeping the historical value of those homes, I look at headquarters number one, and, you know, it's a museum in and of itself, I'd love to see all those units be utilized someday, but, you know, it's kind of a shotting star on the rest of the community, it kind of overlooks the community, and paying attention to it, and allowing vets to utilize them is a tremendous way to use these units, so thanks Doug for doing this, and again, sticking with it.
Thank you, Stan. The views from these houses from the front porches are phenomenal, it's, if you're up on the third floor, it's, you can see flagstaff, it's really cool.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate that. Any members of the public would like to make a comment concerning this proposal? Yes, ma'am?
Good morning, my name is Violeta Ayalon, and I certainly echo the council voices that it's a needed renovation and needed expansion of the housing, but as somebody mentioned, why not to expand the rest of them that are not in the six that are being proposed? When you expand the others, the cost may go down per unit and will have more spaces for additional veterans, especially since there is a waiting list, as was mentioned, for the vets, and I think that somebody up there needs to think about it and make a proposal for the other units. Yeah, it may take a little while, but I think it will be a worthwhile investment, just a comment and suggestion.
Thank you, ma'am, we also need to have your address too.
Yeah, my address is on the signing sheet, 3160 Emherz Drive, Prescott 86301, and my husband is a vet too, so he echoes my feelings and recommendation for additional expansion of all the other units, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else would like to make a comment concerning this application? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend approval of site plan, S-I-T-E 22-012 VA Apartments, per the site plan submitted.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Tom Riley.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, Kaylee, would you call the roll?
Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Stan Galagaski?
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison?
Yes.
Tom Riley?
Yes.
Ted Gambotti?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0.
Next on the agenda is S-I-T-E 22-018, Site Plan Review for Esprit Sports on approximately 9.97 acres, zoning BR Business Regional, property owner Esprit AZ LLC, applicant Stroh Architecture, site APN 103-20-598J, location 3400 Gateway Boulevard. Tammy?
Thank you Chairman, Members of the Commission. So this is a formerly Sears Department Store, that's how it was historically known as. Aspire Sports purchased the building and has obtained permits and currently open, so they did get water approved with their original building permit, but as they started developing it, they made some other changes to it, and they increased the water usage, which required a new water service application to be reviewed under the new current water policy, so their use before was under the old water policy, so then the expansion of the uses and the fixtures, water fixtures and such, created an increase in demand, so now it has to get a new water service application and go through this process. So like I said, this is Business Regional at the mall, this is the old Sears building here, here's the imagery of it, they do own the parking area around it, which is adequate for the proposed use, as well as they have shared parking agreements with the rest of the mall property. There are no changes to the outside, the only changes are some outdoor pickleball courts out here, otherwise it's all interior usage, except for this area right here, like I said, the outdoor pickleball courts, and I believe this is an outdoor possible dining area in the future, but there is adequate parking on site, on the Sears, on the subject property for the proposed use, and like I said, they have shared parking agreements with the mall All this was reviewed with their building permits, they do have building permits, they are renting up off a temporary CVO right now, Certificate of Occupancy, so, but everything was reviewed. So the reason why this is in front of you today was because of the new water service application, and it requires the site plan to come through this process. So that concludes my presentation, I'm free to answer any questions.
Questions for Tammy, Tom?
Yes, Tammy, thank you for that. I guess further explanation as to what has caused them to need more water, I mean, what have they changed?
Additional water fixtures, so they added some showers and additional toilets, and then also the addition of possible restaurant and bar in the future, so we make sure that any proposed uses, we want to capture now in that water service application, so the demand, the water demand went up.
Thank you.
So, you're welcome.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions for Tammy?
The facility is currently operating, isn't it?
Yes, they did get a building permit, and then when they got that building permit, they had a water application, and it was approved under the old water policy, so with the expansion of the use and the fixtures, they had to be reviewed under the new water policy, which required a new water service application.
Are those outdoor pickle courts, pickleball courts there now, or are they proposed?
They're being built right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Tammy? Would the applicant like to address the commission?
He left.
Sold it.
Good morning, my name is Jim Thomas, my address is 681 Driftwood Court, Prescott, Arizona 86305. Thank you, gentlemen, for your service, I'm the CEO of Aspire Sports. I have water bills that basically show that we actually don't use more water, but I think with this new agreement, the way they calculate water, it seems like it's a lot more, so we think we're going to use less than a third of an acre of water per year, but because of the new agreement, here we are, so, yeah, it's just because we have a few more toilets and urinals, and we have a future bar and restaurant, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before questions, I'd like to apologize for mispronouncing your name.
That's okay, Aspire, that's right, that's right.
With a name like mine, I should be aware that could be mispronounced.
And we think, we think what we've done there is pretty cool for the city of Prescott, and we also think it's pretty nice for Gateway Mall, we feel like we're going to help rejuvenate that entire area, so we hope to come before you again, we're, our vision is a destination spot, so we want to get some more housing kind of things, maybe a hotel, something like that, so that people can stay, they can come from around the world, come to Prescott, enjoy Aspire Sports, enjoy everything that Prescott has to offer.
Okay. Questions for the applicant?
I have questions, they're not related to whether you qualify or not, just information for me, what facilities do you have inside the building now?
So it's a long list, you know, we're being called a pickleball facility, but we actually have golf simulators, we have bowling, we have a full USC basketball court, we have a full gym, we have a game room that you have cornhole, billiards, ping pong, shuffleboard, you name it, we have a pro shop, we have a juice bar, and we'll have about 19 pickleball courts, and the reason we have so many pickleball courts is we're actually bringing in pros, we'll bring in televised tournaments that will be on CBS Sports and ESPN and things like that, so pickleball's a pretty big deal, I don't know if you've heard, but it's blowing up around the country, so.
How do you protect the outdoor pickleball courts from wind?
The only thing that would protect is we'll have a six-foot chain-link fence with wind screens around the edge.
Thank you.
Yeah, but if it's windy, that's the whole deal, is that we're indoors, right? So that's the, it's, we're going to put Prescott on the map as far as pickleball, it's probably the nicest indoor pickleball facility in the country. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? I've seen your facilities, sir, I'm impressed with it there.
Thank you so much.
And it seems to be very well occupied, when every time I've been out that way, it's been busy.
Yeah, we're getting there, we're about 570 members right now, on the way to hopefully over 1,000.
Oh, well, good.
And it's healthy, fun, living. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Yeah, Tom Hutchison, I'd like to move that we approve Agenda Item 22-018, as written.
There was a question.
Oh, and I didn't allow for public comment, I'm sorry about that, I'll get back to you, Tom. Any public comment? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Violeta Ayalon, and I already gave my address before, I am one of those that plays in Aspire Building, and I have to say that it's fantastic, and any expansions will be welcomed by all the people who go there on a regular basis. It's something that has never been tried before in this area, and I think will keep all of our residents who join or come to play pickleball or basketball or games healthy and for a long time, so I wanted to thank you very, very much for what you're trying to do, and more in the future, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else would like to make a comment concerning this application? Tom, back to you.
Motion.
All right, I'll try it again.
S-I-T-E, you need to say S-I-T-E, the number.
I can't hear you.
You have to say S-I-T-E 22-018.
Yeah, Tom Hutchison, I move that we approve Site Plan S-I-T-E 22-018, as written.
Give me a chance, Tom. We have a motion and a quick second on that, any further discussion? If not, Kaylee, would you call the roll for vote?
Yes, Butch Tracy?
Yes.
Tom Riley?
Yes.
Stan Galagaski?
Yes.
Tom Hutchison?
Yes.
Ted Gambotti?
Yes.
Don Michaelman?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0.
Next on the agenda is S-I-T-E 22-019, Site Plan Review for Circle K Expansion, zoning BG Business General, property owner Weed Investments, Inc., applicant Land Development Consultants, LLC, site APN 106-21-008L and M, location 3101 Willow Creek Road. Tammy?
Thank you Chairman, Members of the Commission. So the existing Circle K will be razed, and a newer, larger store will be built with more gas pumps. With the gas pumps, they also have went through a conditional use permit process through the Board of Adjustments, but that doesn't qualify for the site plan review for water policy, so we're having to do this additional process to come through this process too. The expansion increases the water demand and requires a water service application to be reviewed by the Water Issues Subcommittee with the expansion of the use. So the zoning of this property is Business General, it is also located in a commercial corridor of Willow Creek Road, which is one of our major roadways in the city of Prescott. The two properties are in the process of being combined right now to become one lot for the proposed expansion. Here's the area view, we have Willow Creek Road here, we have Culvers, we have the apartments here, to kind of see what's been going on, Culvers was built a couple of years ago, or a year ago, and is operating now, so that we have now the Circle K expanding to match the newer current facilities that are being built around the Quad City area. Then here's another facility, we do have a wash along the back here, and a wash here, which is going to remain intact, per the new site plan that I sent to you guys yesterday, I think it was, all these existing trees, mature trees are going to remain, that was something that we have tried to work with the applicant for, to have these remain to act as a buffer along the backside of this property for these residences, and it meets the screening requirements. These houses sit up higher than the commercial property, so we're trying to do as much buffering as we can with that. Here's the site plan that I did send to you, it's clear, you can actually see it a little bit better, than the last one, so this access off College Heights exists, and with the expansion, they're moving their access off Willow Creek Road away from the intersection, which is lighted, which is better, because right now it gets kind of clustered right here, so a traffic impact analysis was not required, because they're remaining the same number of access points, and this actually is better and safer than what they already had there, and then everything meets the site plan requirements. Once this is built, it's going to kind of act as an additional buffer, there's no access behind the building, it's all going to be vegetation, these trees here are existing trees, and those will remain, and they're going to be adding some other trees here to help fill in the gaps, and then this here along here is required per the Land Development Code for landscaping. So this has been reviewed through a couple of processes now, the building meets the setback requirements, the circulation is fine, there's no issues from fire department, the landscaping, screening, and buffering meets the code requirements, and they're, like I said, they're keeping the existing mature trees, which is good, it'll help buffer during construction, some of the noise. At the Board of Adjustment meeting, we did have some neighbors come in opposition to this, because they're concerned about the noise during construction, which we can't really do anything about, so. Outdoor lighting will be reviewed with permitting, it has to meet all dark-skinned It has to meet all dark sky requirements, and because it's in a commercial corridor, there's actually additional criteria for lighting for reduction of lights during certain hours. Parking is...meets all code requirements, and the access points meet all the...there was no issues from Public Works about the new access off Willow Creek Road. It's actually a better location than what they have now. And that concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions, and the representative is also here to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy. Tom, do you have a...
Yeah, Tom Hutchison. Tammy, have the environmental concerns been addressed by the city? We're going to...I presume we're going to dig up the old tank and put in a much larger fuel storage facility and pumping. Have the environmental concerns been addressed?
They will. Right now, we're going through this process before they can apply for permits, but they'll have to go through with the demo and removal. I'll go through...there's an apartment environmental quality. They'll meet all the requirements that will have to go through us through the permitting process.
The other concern, the other thought I had was regarding the five electric vehicle charging stations. If you fast forward, is that enough? That was my internal question.
It's a start. So it's a start, so we can see if there's a require...if there's a need later, then maybe they'll have room to add more, possibly.
So there'll be enough electrical infrastructure to expand on that if needed?
That'll be all through permitting. So they'll have to show all that when they permit all that.
Thank you.
We're not to that point yet. We're just going through this process first.
Butch?
Tammy, Butch Tracy. What's bordering the back lot, the back lot line? What's back there? Are those residents? Are they...
They're residents.
They are.
Yeah, so right here, if you look at the site plan, these are all single-family residences. They sit up higher, which I didn't have my pictures in here. They do sit up higher, probably 20 feet higher, so 10 to 20 feet higher than the commercial properties. So...
How much are they going to raise that property?
Not very much. I mean, right now, the existing store is existing, and then the new lot will match that as they expand.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Tammy? I have one. What we're looking at here is basically taking an operation and making it bigger, adding more gas pumps, making the store bigger, too. How does that increase water usage? You're still going to have the same number of bathrooms in there?
Correct. What we're seeing with these commercial projects, even though they're low-use water, the landscaping is kicking it over the one-acre feet a year. Some of them are minuscule, minuscule, but because they're going over the one-acre feet a year, it has to go to Water Issue Subcommittee. So that's something we are looking at and discussing internally to see if there's maybe something that we might be able to change in the water policy moving forward to maybe for commercial uses, maybe increase that a little bit so the landscaping isn't kicking in these requirements. We don't want to reduce the landscaping requirements. That won't be a good thing to do because we do require low-water use plants. We do have lists that they have to choose the plants from, which all these will meet that requirement. But that's kind of what we're seeing. Even though the businesses and the uses are low water, it's the landscaping that's kicking it over. So...
Would the applicant like to address the commission?
Good morning. My name's Jill Kaiser. My residence is 4401 East Montecristo Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona. Thanks for having us. I'm with Land Development Consultants, and we are the consultant that handles all the entitlements and permitting for Circle K stores. As Tammy mentioned, we're keeping the majority of the rear trees behind as well. There's already an existing wall back there that will remain that we won't be touching at all. There are a couple of trees right behind the store that will have to come down during construction. It's impossible for them to stay, so we're keeping as many as we can, and that's indicated on the plan. And that's an additional buffer. We didn't...we decided to do that to address the concerns we had at the CUP Board of Adjustments meeting, to add additional sound buffering to the residents behind us because we can't raise the whole parcel up higher, obviously, to do that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear now?
Maybe the light could be turned up just a little bit.
Yeah, just speak louder if you could. I don't...I can't adjust the volume from here.
No problem. Anyway, I was just saying we did keep those trees as additional sound buffering, as Tammy mentioned. And that's all I have to say. We're excited about this new store. I'm sure you've seen our other stores in the area, two in Prescott Valley. There's one in Cottonwood that we've opened in the last couple of years, and this one will be very, very similar to those. Having more offerings for the public inside, as well as additional pumps, will really help the area.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the applicant? Stan, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you on that. Any members of the public would like to make a comment? Yes, ma'am?
Violetta Ayalon. So I'm one of those residents behind the Circle K that is currently there, and at the last month's meeting, it was requested by the council and the members that were present to address the sound issue. And by planting two or three trees, the sound is not going to be reduced. So obviously, there was no real planning on the part of the builder or the consultant to make the true effort and build a wall of some sort, that is soundproof wall like they do on the highways. There is also tools that can be purchased to minimize the noise. There are special tools that can be used for that purpose. And there is a lot that can be done, but there has to be a will to spend the money to do it and consider the residents that are right behind it. We already have had the experience with the Culvers Restaurant there, and it was horrific, I have to tell you. If you would try to be there during the time that they are operating or during the time the construction took place, you would have to be hospitalized, I can assure you. That's how bad it was. So I am asking before a permit is issued or that you guys vote to approve this project that there will be a true plan, a real plan, that can build a wall for the construction period, as well as afterwards, due to the increased traffic and increased volume of the area. So please be kind enough to the residents that live behind it and make sure that the builder will do what can be done. And again, you have to get experts who have built highways, who have built projects to soundproof the area in such a way that it won't disturb the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from the public? Okay. Is there a motion?
Tom Riley. Move to send an approval...recommendation for approval for S I T E 22-019.
Circle K expansion.
Circle K expansion. For the site plan submitted.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Tom Hutchison, I'll second.
All right. Motion seconded. Any further discussion? If not, Kaylee, would you call the verrou vote, please?
Butch Tracy?
I'd approve.
Tom Riley?
Approve.
Stan Galagaski?
Approve.
Thomas Hutchison?
Approve.
Ted Gambogi?
Approve.
Don Michaelman?
Approve.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay. Tammy, any updates from the staff?
So we don't have any other meetings for the rest of the month, so you're free. Happy Thanksgiving. We will see you December 8th. We do have a rezoning, another site plan, and possibly something else fun on the agenda for you.
Okay, all righty. Then the meeting is adjourned.